I have a motion. And you're in charge of the.
Yeah. We talked to him. Have you talked to him? Well. Do you have that? Yeah. Yeah. We haven't worked. Six more, six more. Two different.
Yeah, she wants that one.
She'll be careful. I might send her back to the station. She should have eight, six, five, four. We have to finish. We have to leave here. This is too. One minute. You guys ready? Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and thank you all for attending. It's great to have this many people engaged in this process, and we really do appreciate it. We had five people sign up to speak this evening. And so with that, with public input, I'm going to kind of start things a little differently. We are, each person will get three minutes for that discussion, and board member Ryder will time you so you know what time, where your time is at. If, I think some of you are representing groups, I was worried we were going to have a lot of groups, so I was going to have people go out and kind of get together and organize, but since we don't have to do that, I don't think we need to do that at this time. When you come forward, please state your name and your address, and we ask that you keep your comments professional, and remember that we must keep the best interests of all of our students in mind. We also remind people that personal attacks are not accepted at our school board meetings. Your child and your situation are very important to us. Please be advised that the board is here to listen to your comments. We are not here to engage in debate. Our sole purpose is to listen, and we won't be taking action off the comments. We will be taking action on the boundaries choices. Tonight is the first board meeting on the boundaries, so we would like as many topics as possible addressed in that timeframe. We invited the public into the sausage making of this process, and it can get messy, but I hope that we have been very transparent in this process to vet all of the options to the public and even the ones that we have requested. The vote on this school attendance boundaries is still scheduled for Monday, June 22nd, where we also will take more public comment at that time. Thank you. We did not have anybody signed up to address the board on non-agenda items. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. I'll have you read that right before we start. Thanks. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Onto the good news report.
Of course, just as I walk through. The computer completely turned off.
Ryan, I told you that couldn't happen tonight.
Yeah. I can just go ahead. If Ryan gets to that or gets that working, we can do that out of order here a little bit. Next week, as you know, can't come soon enough for our high school students who are involved in activities, both in sports and in fine arts. Plans have been finalized for students to return to the weight room, the training room, and other practice areas with a phased approach that will add more possibilities for them if the public health situation continues to improve. Conversely, if the public health situation requires that we stop Phase One, we will do so with the guidance of the city, the state, and also our district health services supervisor, Molly Satter, who as recently as five o'clock sent out another set of guidelines for our summer programs. So we continue to watch as those things change and make adjustments as necessary. In terms of fine arts activities, just to let you know, there'll be no large group activities, so groups must be smaller than 10 with one instructor, and similarly, they will include entry screening of students, just like our athletics. Music sectionals begin on the hour and go for 45 minutes to allow for a 10-minute period for cleaning before the next group arrives to be screened there. And theater, oral inter and debate activities will begin on the half hour, so we don't have everybody congregating and coming in. And they also have various doors they're using throughout the building so that we can keep groups separated as necessary. And of course, we're in the deep planning right now for our in-person graduation, which we hope to have on June 27th and 28th at Howard Woodfield. While the virtual graduation, we believe, was deemed a success, certainly there's still that desire there for a traditional ceremony. We surveyed seniors and their parents last week to get a good idea of how many would participate if we were holding this graduation on the 27th and 28th. We also asked for an estimate as to the number of guests that they might be bringing with them so that we could plan on our seating, if you will, whether we'll need one side of Howard Woodfield or whether we'll need both sides in order to maintain the social distancing requirements. Chairs for the graduates will be sitting on the field and placed accordingly. There will be no handshakes. Instead, there will be head nods of congratulations. The diplomas and covers are being picked up by our high school seniors within the next week to two weeks, so we won't be handing them anything either. We still do want very much for them to have the experience of their family and their classmates being with them, and that honor of walking across the stage. So many times when we talk about graduation, we talk about walking across the stage, and so certainly it's symbolic and very meaningful for graduates, and we want them to have that experience. Of course, there are two wild cards in all of that. First of all, the number of positive COVID cases in our area needs to remain low throughout the month, and we'll continue to monitor that. The second factor, of course, weather. We're in South Dakota, right? So we're crossing our fingers for a mild June day, if that's even possible. As long as it's safe on both of those fronts, we really look forward to hosting that graduation at Howard Woodfield on June 27th and 28th. And what I had hoped to show you at the beginning is that our return to normal plan, you're going to hear about a little bit for educational purposes as one of your board reports, and we're sort of returning to normal with our Kids, Inc. summer program right now, and I wanted to show you a couple of photos from the first week of Kids, Inc. They are starting the year out with a theme called Think, Make, Create, and students are using scientific principles to explore a wide variety of topics because they can't actually take field trips right now. They're doing virtual field trips, but I think it sounds pretty cool. They're exploring how 3M scientists are using biomimicry. I had to think about how to say that. They're looking at how things like gecko's feet, spider legs, goose feathers, and fireflies can help 3M scientists improve an event and invent new products. JFK students are virtually going to the Johnson Space Center for activities with rockets, Martians, and different forces of energy that surface in space travel. So they are traveling to Johnson's Space Center. And then, of course, trips to local swimming pools are always very popular in our Summer Kids, Inc. program. Of course, we can't do that either, but hey, we have water carnivals, and so some of our schools are declaring Water Wednesdays, where they'll be doing outdoor activities, still allowing for a little fun during the summer months with some water as well. So just wanted to provide you with a few updates as to how we are adjusting and making things work throughout this summer season. Any questions?
Where can parents and students find out?
Where could students and parents find out exactly for Phase One of activities starting, like to get their detail for their building and so forth?
Excuse me. So on the district webpage, there is Coronavirus or COVID-19 Resource Center, and if you click on there, all of the plans for athletics and fine arts are on there as well. And as we move from Phase One to Phase Two and Phase Three, we'll be communicating that out directly to participants in our activities. So we will let people know when we're moving from Phase One to Phase Two, again with great direction from our city and state health department, as well as Molly Satter in our health services.
I know, even as parents, you know, we've all been making these strange adjustments in our kids' activities for the summer, and so I'm not surprised, but I'm very happy to hear that, you know, Kids, Inc. is really trying to go out and make it an enjoyable exploratory time for kids to, even with the restrictions that are unfortunately in place. So I would expect nothing less because they always do a great job, but.
I think a lot of our parents, you know, are appreciative of the fact that that is an option for their kids, keeping them engaged in learning over the summer, yet also having that safe quality care while the parent is away at work. So we did lose some students who decided not to participate in Kids, Inc. over the summer months. Certainly, we understand that as well. All of our students are in cohorts. They're grouped in cohorts, so they're with their cohort throughout the day, and they don't switch and mingle with various groups. They're kept separately. So that is, again, in line with CDC guidelines.
Thank you for that update. Any questions? Thank you.
Point of order, Madam President. May I make a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting held.
I skipped over. Thank you very much. I was so excited to get to Boundaries. Thank you. Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the May 26th and June 3rd minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There was no additional supplemental consent agendas. Onto the reports to the superintendent. Are we getting our technical figured out? Thank you, Ryan. Start with Kristin Greenagger as soon as we're ready. Thank you.
I don't need visuals, so I think we're okay.
Awesome. Even better.
I have two waivers to bring forward tonight. The first waiver is a renewal that allows for credit before ninth grade for some of our eighth-grade students who take possibly Algebra I, Excelled Algebra II, or Accelerated Geometry. And the second waiver is a new waiver where we're asking for credit before grade nine
Thank you. It's open now to the public for any comments regarding the two waivers presented by Kristin Greenagger. The hearing's closed. Now to comments from the board. Any questions for Kristin?
I mean, I think it makes sense. It's great when our students can earn credit prior to high school. Allows them.
Allows them some flexibility and freedom in their high school coursework to be able to take other classes that are of interest to them as well, so.
Is the CTE one is new, correct?
It is, correct.
Which is so awesome because, you know, we were kind of knocked before for not having people take two CTE courses and then getting that career-ready availability. And so to get them, you know, out there in 9th or before 9th grade to expose themselves to CTE would be awesome and hopefully catch them up on that.
Yeah. Give them a chance to see something they might want to pursue in high school as well.
spark some interest. Yeah, absolutely.
So then I would ask that you direct us to send the waivers to the state for approval.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to boundaries. While Doug gets set up, I'm going to have board member Ryder just read something we prepared just to address maybe questions that we've seen repeatedly from the public.
All right. So first off, I just wanted to talk a little bit about transportation to high school. There is not a widespread busing option for high school students. However, we do have Tripper buses. For those who are not familiar with that, I just want to share a little bit of information on how those are currently working. These routes are operated by School Bus Inc. for the school district. We currently operate five buses total, three for Roosevelt, one for Lincoln, and one for Washington. Each bus has 15 to 18 stops to pick up students from a variety of areas and gets them to the designated high school. These Tripper buses will continue even with our new boundaries. They will be assessed and new stops will be created. Potentially additional routes will be added based on the needs of the school. These are fee-based and they work on a sliding scale. Passes are purchased through the high school office and are purchased monthly. Perhaps some months, a student needs it and others they don't. These passes can also be used on the Sioux area metro buses as well. For those that are involved in activities, carpooling is very common and encouraged. Many teams, groups will set up a group chat, and students can communicate with their team members and make arrangements for rides to and from early or late practices. This happens today, and we would foresee that that would continue to happen in the future. As far as demographics, I try not to always look online, but I think it's important to read comments that people make so I can understand maybe some concerns or misunderstandings. And I did see some comments online about the board trying to create boundaries based on race and wondering how we knew where minorities live to be able to assign certain populations to schools. And I just want you to know that we are not and never have been trying to create boundaries based on race. We are using the free and reduced lunch price numbers to help guide us. By using an economic indicator, we're trying to assure that all of our schools benefit from having an active PTA or PTO to support them. We want to encourage all students at all schools to participate in activities, whether it's art, music, or athletic. And by having a balanced economic number at each school, we hope to be able to support more students in that participation. We offer the same high level of education at all of our schools and want them to each have the support of their school communities as well. Regarding the community submitted proposal, there have been many ideas or concepts that have been presented to the district for consideration. Last week, we received one referred to as "our" option that was the product of Westside families that organized a Facebook group to discuss options. A couple of board members are even members of that group. Last week, when we talked about it, we had received roughly 12 messages on Let's Talk regarding that specific plan, and not all of them were supporting it. To be clear, we understand that there are about 1,650 members of that Facebook group. While that plan that came from that group, it does not represent the views of all 1,650 people. And that's okay. That's not the expectation that you would find an entire group. We by no means have a threshold of number of likes or members of a Facebook group for us to consider an option and its validity. I just wanted to be clear that we are considering all options as long as they help us to best meet the five priorities that were set forth at the start of this process and keep our boundaries in place for the longest amount of time. Last week, we also received some additional considerations that were presented to the board at our work session. Through this process, we have asked the district to help us with identifying any small tweaks that could be made that would change student populations, keep cohort groups together, provide a safe driving route, et cetera. When we received our final report last week, there were a couple of considerations that were offered for both middle school and high school options. Those were our first look at those options, and we didn't spend a lot of time talking about them as we were still looking at the big picture. Please know that we will make decisions that are in the best interest of students, schools, and the community when considering these options and how to move forward. One that has gathered a lot of interest was moving a section of the Whittier enrollment that would currently go to Washington, but have it be in the new boundary going to Lincoln. The reason that option was brought up for consideration was to keep the Whittier cohorts together transitioning to high school, to allow the neighborhoods that are currently assigned to Washington to stay at Washington, and to help alleviate the population at Lincoln, which does tend to have a higher number of open enrollments due to specialized programs and its convenient access. Due to the priority of balancing status across our schools, we do not support the moving of the Whittier neighborhood back to Washington, but instead would like them to stay in the Lincoln boundary as indicated in both proposed high school options. We will look at the merits of each of these ideas that were brought forward and for consideration to decide if they meet the needs of the priorities that we are trying to fulfill. I also see comments about, you know, we've sent all this information and they're not listening to us. And so we, as a district and a board, have worked very hard during a difficult time to ensure that we're still collecting feedback from our community. Between calling into virtual meetings, using Let's Talk, or just sending an email, we have heard from many, many people. We appreciate that feedback, and in many cases, it has caused us to look at something different, ask more questions, or move a line slightly. While it may not be evident to you all, we have been asking questions and challenging our district leaders to get us more and more information when we want to ensure we aren't missing something. They have been busy collecting and sharing data with us. And I want to assure you that while a change that you might have suggested or the plan that you might support the most may not be the one that ultimately is approved, we have heard you. Please do not confuse your choice not being selected with us not listening, as that simply is not true. And I think that poor Doug can probably attest to that. The last four or five days especially, you've been hammered by us asking you questions. And we so appreciate the time and energy that I know when you've got multiple people emailing you and asking different things. But I wish I could show everybody behind the scenes the amount of questioning and what if we did this, and what if we did this, and what would this mean that has actually been done. And a lot of it has stemmed from the questions that you all have asked and the suggestions that you've made. We've tried to make as many of those kind of tweaks as we can as long as the end result makes sense for what our goals are. So I just wanted that information out there initially so that when people are giving feedback, they kind of understand some of those concerns that we have heard and we are aware of.
And then for the public, so they're prepared. Doug will give kind of a recap and update a little bit. We had a couple of questions and tweaks out there. And then we'll open it up for the public comment. And we'll start with the middle school people and then move to the high school just so you can prepare, and we'll call your name out when it's your time.
Oh, good evening. My pleasure supplying, my team supplying the data. It's an important decision, so, you know, we've tried to answer everything, whether it was from the community or you guys. And so feel good about that, and it makes us better to look at all different things. So kind of picking up where we left off from the work session, you know, we had a couple-hour meeting looking at all the different boundary questions, grandfathering questions, those types of things, looking at a lot of data. So really, tonight, picking up sort of where we left off and just recapping, we do have two middle school options, middle school option A and middle school option B. Again, probably the biggest differences we've talked about between these two is how the west side is divided up. And so option A is really taking the JFK, moving it to Edison. And then in option B, moving the Garfield bus area up to McGovern and in the area west of T Ellis Road. And so we talked at length about those. And so then, looking at the data behind those, you asked us to look at two just variations of that. And again, we have to, these are just things to look at. They're not maybe official options that go forward, but they're, you know, everyone has to be mature enough to know we're just looking at different options. And so, or we're asked to look at different things. So in option A, you can see the different scenarios as far as numbers and then the economic status going across on the second slide. And then we were asked to look in option A if we took that area that was west of T Ellis Road and moved it up to McGovern like it is in option B. And so that's really what that second line is there. It swings about 85 students between, up to McGovern from Memorial. We all know that that cohort is going to grow over time. As Business Manager Beek, I think, predicted, eventually that whole area will encompass over 1,000 kids. And so that will grow over time. And so you can see what the enrollment does across there. And then you can see down in that second table what it would do to our economic status percent of each one of those schools. So it's a fairly small cohort. Then we were asked to look at option B. And if you recall, option B has both Honors in Spanish Immersion at Edison. And so we were asked to look at a derivative of that that would move the honors program over to Patrick Henry, like it is in A. And so you can see definitely a shift moving from students from Edison to Patrick Henry. And so that's how, those are really the difference between those two scenarios. And then you can see what it does to the economic or the diversity numbers in that middle slide there. So those are the changes that you asked us to look at. I would say they're not official options, they're just what-ifs. And that's, again, so those are what-ifs if those changes were to be made. So that's kind of where we sit at middle school. I don't know if you want to have me go through high school or breakthrough or middle school or ask questions or kind of how you want to go through that. Certainly do it either way.
Maybe in between, yeah. Would you bring up that one chart with the average distance? Should we do that one after the high school? Because that has middle and high school up there too.
You know, we have been looking at, you know, to the extent we can, we can plot where home is at, where a certain school is at. And then as the crow flies, we can determine distance. And so you can see that up above there in middle school, you can see that on average, we go, you know, we're going from 1.75 miles that the average person would go to their middle school. And then under any scenario, it decreases, which is natural because you're adding a middle school. So you would think that it would decrease. You know, they're not huge numbers. They're, you know, point to point. But, you know, on average, you can see that certainly there's some changes there. I would say on the biggest change there is probably, think of the kids that, from the east side, that used to have to go all the way over to Patrick Henry now are going to Ben rifle. So that, for them, it's going to be, it's certainly going to be a shorter commute from them. So we did look at that, trying to make sure that, you know, no area was significantly changed from a distance perspective. And so certainly, we were out to show that. And so that's sort of what this chart does in the middle school level. The high school level, just sort of, again, in summary, Roosevelt is so expansive today, right? It goes all the way up from the southwest, all the way up to north of Washington. And so we have all those kids going into Roosevelt. So, you know, looking at it, again, the high school improves as well because certainly all those kids that were up in the northeast were moving down to Washington instead of Roosevelt. And then you have Jefferson, so those kids are, it's closer for them. So in general, we're improving the average distance from a student's house to their school. Now, obviously, it's an average, so there's some, you know, some slight changes in that. We know that. We know that some kids, students, may go to a school that's farther than to another school, right? It happens today. We know that there's kids that go to Washington that are closer to Lincoln. It happens. It's what has to be done to manage the school populations of each school. But we did look in average to make sure that no area was significantly changed in those scenarios. So just something we were able to look at.
Thank you. Yeah, because we, I don't think the public had seen this chart yet. So I think that was important since that was one of the five factors in our, and so I really appreciate you putting all this information together for us to share.
Yeah. So something you asked us to look at, and we were able to figure out and how to do that from a software perspective, at least look at, like, again, look at average distances, so. So I don't know if you want me to go on to high school? Okay. High school, you know, we had option A and option C. And I'll just kind of run through those again. Option A was really built off of middle school option A, and we were trying to get as many middle schools to feed high schools in their entirety as possible. And then there were a couple areas that we divided up. But you can see option A was, you know, is that scenario. Option B was so similar to option A at the end of the day that we just eliminated it. Because all you were really doing is how you divided up the west side cohort. Rest is pretty much the same. So we eliminated B to bring forward to the public. And then we, and then through the public feedback, we ended up at option C. So there was a lot of feedback on that area, on option A, that goes down in the discovery area. Those people said, well, we're closer to Roosevelt than we are to the other school. And so we listened to them and as much as we could, we moved that line up to 26th Street, being a natural boundary. And so we tried to bring more of those students in to be able to stay at Roosevelt. Now, I know people will say, well, can you move it up to 12th Street? And, you know, all, you know, and, but that's what option C was based on. And then when we moved that, more students into Roosevelt, we moved that cohort from Kiwanis to Western over into Lincoln. And so, and then shifted a little part of that Hawthorne area over to Jefferson. So that was sort of the scenario that option C was. And so, and then, again, through the community feedback, right? Trying to look at no option, I think we were pretty good about answering at least anecdotal questions of, you know, but our option came out of the west side, as you referred to before. And it was an option where they did a lot of work and put some numbers together. And so basically, it's that strip between 12th Street and 26th Street, moving that Western part, leaving it in Roosevelt instead of going to Jefferson. And then moving that area of, where on that 222 number, sort of, that's just east of I-29, moving that into Jefferson. And of course, that's the country club area. There's a lot of green space and there's not a lot of students. But that was really that change. And then a small cohort down in the south of 29, there's a little triangle area. And actually, that's one that we suggested making as well because those families just come, get on 29, and then they go a couple miles and they're at Lincoln. So that's actually more convenient for them, and we heard from them. So that was our option. And I think you did a good job of explaining that it's, even though we might have factually said that there were 12 that responded through Let's Talk, that was factual, wasn't to mislead anyone. That was factual data. I don't know how Facebook groups out there and who approved what, like you said. But now since then, of course, there's been a lot more that have come in through Let's Talk supporting that thing, which is great, right? It's engagement from the community. So then we essentially, we were sort of the last meeting dealing with it anecdotally, right? Just acknowledging it. Well, we went in and we actually did the work to put it into a, what I call an option that we built into our software. So we're able to now give the actual, you know, the actual numbers of students, right? And then down at the bottom, we were able to look at the economic status of those students that would be in those areas. I just go back to a point you made, Carly, about we're not looking at, the first thing we did in our process was we took the students and we eliminated all the names and we replaced with random numbers. So we don't know when we're working with these files who a particular name is in that file. We're dealing with random numbers. And so we certainly know attributes of those random numbers. And so we can roll up all things that, something like that, what the economic status of that school is. But we don't know the names behind those. I don't know the names or not any files that I have. And so that's how we work with those. But then you can see how the economic status plays out of each one of those options. And so, and then, and to your point, Carly, that you made, you wanted to see Jefferson combined. And so we combined those instead of looking at New Tech and Jefferson. There's reasons for that, but there's also reasons to combine it. So that was great to point that out. It helped us. And so now we have a combined column out there so you can see what the economic status is. And so, now we have a combined column out there, so you can see what the economic status of, and that's really, that bottom chart is the number of students that would be on free or reduced lunch that would go to those, those schools, based on actually putting those into our software, some of the, you know, rather than just look at anecdotally. So we now have that as a, as a version that we can do about anything with. So, so that's kind of, we looked at the distance thing, so that's kind of where we sit, we sit tonight, as far as things that we looked at or followed up on, and, and, and so, I would stand by for questions at this point, or if you want to go to feedback, or whatever, you want to go from there.
Should we go to public input? We'll start with public input, if you'd stand by for questions after. Thank you. Will you be my timer? John Clausen, would you be first? Please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes after you state those. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is John Clausen, lifelong resident of Sioux Falls, address 3109 South Lincoln Avenue. And I just want to say that I'm a product of Washington 79, and my children are products of Roosevelt, and they've done well, and it's all because of the school system to a large degree, and I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank you for the opportunity to be on the task force, too. With that said, I had some issues last week with Zoom, so I did not participate very well with the process, so that's why I'm here tonight, and so here I am. Let us remember that when the task force started on January 20th, that was Dr. King Day. Let's just remember that. And as we went to our first meeting and we discussed issues, a person raised the issue in the task force about why race was not being involved in the discussion of the task force. And it was part of a two or three-part question, and that question was never answered. So then I raised it, and then I raised it a couple more times, and it became an issue to some degree throughout the debate with the task force. And you're right, that race is not being used, but it should be, otherwise, why is it on our website telling us how many black kids or white kids go to school in Sioux Falls? I think it needs to be, especially in our times, especially what's happened the last two weeks. And personally, I know it's easy for me to stand here and say this, but I believe the board must, needs to start the process all over again, and look at race first, and make sure we mix people together of all races, and bring them together. And then we can deal with issues of walkability, or natural neighborhoods, or what have you. And until we do that, I think we're failing the students, and we're failing this community. You know, I've heard a statistic that said that 15% of our, of our community in this town is, is a minority race. Well, when I graduated from high school in 79, it was probably 2% or 3%. This town is changing, we need to recognize it, and we need, need to represent everybody. And the best way we're going to do that is bringing races together, not dividing, not separating them. I heard a comment by one of the members of the task force that said that we need to protect the, that unique character of Whittier High, of Whittier Middle School. I don't know what that means. I want to protect our children by bringing them together, which means that there's something wrong when Whittier has the kind of racial it has in terms of race, or that Memorial has, or that Roosevelt has with these plans. These need to be dealt with. And if we haven't learned the lesson the last two weeks, I don't know when we're going to. So I, 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 I ask, I plead that you take a second look at this, and bring race into the equation. And a conclusion of my comments, when the task force first met, as I said, it was on January 20th, it was Monday night in January, it was Dr. King Day. There was a time this school board recognized Dr. King Day, before the, say, December movement back in 2013. Now that we're taking the calendar back to August, again, with the school year, I think it's time for us to recognize Dr. King Day. And I think it's symbolic that, that we're not doing that right now, and that we hold meetings on that day, and we ignore race, and we need to deal with race in this community. And I say that as a white man who knows white privilege. I have experienced, I've benefited from it. And part of the problem with white privilege is it's institutional. And when you look at this process, the institutional process that's gone on here, has ignored a key element that needs to be dealt with in this school district and in this town. And if you want to stop having looting, you want to stop having negative protests, then you need to bring people together. And when you bring people together, then you're going to have a better community. I think, once again, I thank you for the opportunity to be on the task force, but in many ways, I think we have failed this community by not dealing with race, and I hope we deal with it going forward. And that's the end of my comments. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ernest, is it Kennedy? Kennedy, thank you. Please state your name and address as well, in three minutes.
Okay. My name's Ernest Kennedy. I live on 6700 West Italian Drive. I moved here 16 years ago from North Carolina. Of course, I don't, I afforded, I could have bought the closest house to this district that I could afford at the time. I don't have a lot of money to be moving around the different districts where, you know, wherever we assign. We come here because my daughter was starting school, and this, at the time, had the best school systems in the country. That's why we moved here. And that district, the Roosevelt Memorial and JFK, was where I wanted them to go. Now, quite frankly, I, when you're talking about mileage on there, that makes really no sense to me, because it takes me six minutes to get Memorial right now, it's taken me about, would take me about 30 minutes to get to Edison. Because I don't know, I mean, I don't know if you guys drive to 41st Street on the morning between 7:00 and 8:00, but it's packed, and it takes a long time. And so y'all got to take into consideration of that, when you're coming from the west side, having to go to central. You know, I mean, I've been to Edison, I think it needs a lot of upgrades, I think it needs to be, you know, brought up to speed to like some of these other schools are, because I just don't think it's there. I mean, I went to a sort of school like that in North Carolina, and that's the reason why I moved my kids up here, because I didn't want them going to school. You know, that wasn't up to par, teachers didn't care, you know, I don't, I don't know, I haven't been there, but that's kind of the reality that I faced when I was there, at my school in North Carolina. So, I would just say, you know, this is not the first time that you guys have tried to redistrict this whole thing, and this is my third time coming to these things, and, you know, quite frankly, I'd rather homeschool my kids than have them go to Edison. That's kind of my take on it. I think we just need to build more schools to meet the population, but, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Sarah Keen has both the middle school and high school, so I'll have you be the bridge between the two, so if that's okay, Sarah? And would you state your name and address, please?
I'm Sarah Keen. I live at 807 Chicory Lane in Sioux Falls. I have four children in the school district, elementary, middle, and high school. So, I am going to possibly look at a couple of notes, because I'm, for the middle school and the high school, I have been asked to speak by nine other families, so I have some notes from all of them. So, I'm trying to remember everything, but, and I'm also representing, of course, not everybody, but the people that have asked me to speak, I'm representing the Spanish immersion support group. So, I'm going to start with a little history, just to make sure everyone understands kind of the history of how the Spanish immersion and honors ended up together, and, and the benefit to the Spanish immersion from that. So, when this started, goodness, it was probably five, six years ago, when the Spanish immersion and started to go into middle school. At the same time, the school district decided to create an honors middle school. Before that, there was no honors middle school. So, and correct me, please, feel free if I'm, if I'm incorrect in my facts, I'm trying to make sure I have everything correct. So at that time, they were decided to put together in Edison, and one of the reasons was, we were, they were running into an issue where Spanish immersion children that qualified for the Challenge Center couldn't leave their regular elementary and go to Challenge Center like, like non-Spanish immersion kids, because if they did that, they'd leave the Spanish immersion program. So they didn't have the option of just going and taking those honors classes. So, by putting the two programs together in middle school, those children that decided to make that commitment to Spanish immersion, which is not a one, or two, or three-year commitment, it's a full life cycle of your, of your schooling family commitment, that those children could then, when they went to middle school, at least be able to take advantage of those honors courses, because they'd be offered at the same middle school as the honors courses. And that was an assurance that these families were given at the time. So, when this all happened in February, and the different options were coming along, there were quite a few families that emailed the district about our concerns with the programs being split, and we were told not to worry about it, that it was not a task force decision, that it was at the administration level, and they didn't, and it was not going to be something of concern. Then, when option A and B came along, and I saw that option A was splitting it, I voiced my concerns again, and I tuned into the live committee meetings, the community input meetings. And Dr. Maher said no less than six times to not discuss programming. He said, this is not a programming discussion, and we were discouraged from calling in to discuss programming. So here we are, and programming is very much on the table. So I just feel that tonight is the last chance to make some of these voices heard that had been silenced prior, because we were told that it was not a programming discussion. So.
Can you wrap it up?
Okay, I thought it was 30 minutes per...
No, so we only had five sign up, so.
Okay. Okay, I just need to make sure the background, because I've watched every, I've watched the work meeting, there's a lot of incorrect and infactual information, I need to give that history. To my point, there are children now that have, based on that commitment, and based on the commitment of the families, and the promises from the district, that are on track, for example, I'm going to use math, are on track for the honors math acceleration, which means that they'd be taking geometry in eighth grade. If the programs are split, and geometry is no longer offered at Edison, those children have three choices. Number one, take no math in eighth grade, not have a math class. Number two, leave Spanish immersion and go to wherever the honors school is, which is the choice all other non-Spanish immersion kids usually make when they qualify, they move over to the honors middle school. Number three, they can commute, but if they were to commute, for example, to Patrick Henry, they would miss 20 minutes on either side of two core classes per day, because Spanish immersion children, again, are unique in that they don't have those elective classes during the day, because their electives are taken by core Spanish classes. So, that would mean they leave, lose 20 minutes of English a day, and 20 minutes of science a day.
You'd let you go to like five minutes.
Yep. So last, so in conclusion, I, whatever the best thing for the district is, whether it's option A, option B, splitting the programs or not splitting the programs, what we are requesting is that the district honor that commitment and offer those classes to the children that qualify. And that means that the high school level classes that are currently offered, continue to be offered in, at Edison, so the kids don't have to miss 40 minutes of core classes every day, because that's really, or not have a math class, because neither of those are acceptable solutions.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Can I speak on the high school?
No, you, you, you had three minutes, so, thank you. Mark Murren, please, and please state your name and address.
My name is Mark Murren, I live at 3509 South Genevieve.
Thank you.
I, I've taught in the school, or been associated with Sioux Falls School District for 31 years. I retired in, I don't remember when, 2017, and since then, I've worked with the district through the AP study hall program, and then I've, I've actually still coaching football at Washington High School. So, I've been around a long time. I went to school, I graduated from Lincoln High School, I went to Whittier in Cleveland, and obviously, I've seen a lot of changes. I was away for 14 years, I coached and taught in three other high schools. Through this process, I told my wife, I said, hey, I think this is a good deal. I think it's fair, right? I really like it. This is good. And I really, I was thinking, man, A, B, C, those are all good options. And when the, the work session came out, I, wow, I didn't get it. I mean, I really didn't get it. And I, I know that people are concerned about things. It bothered me that it came out a week before we're going to be here. It's like, what? Where'd this come from? And maybe you knew about it, I didn't. And I, and I, you know, whatever, I, I know people, and I think the committee did a great job, and I understand that people are compassionate about things, but usually, we kind of try to follow a system. And I think the Sioux Falls Public Schools, whatever happens, still going to be a great place. I love this place. I love the kids. There's not a bad high school in Sioux Falls. Jefferson is going to be a great high school. They got some great leadership. Dan Conrad was one of my athletes, and I had him in class, and he survived. So I know you picked the right guy. But, my point is, through this process, this, this concept of open enrollment, I've, I've never really been in favor of it, but I was disappointed when the South Dakota Activities Association put it through. But, to me, it seems like there's a misconception that you have to attend a certain school, okay? Like, there's not really an honors program at Lincoln, is there?
No.
No. But it, it confuses me, because I know that some of my former athletes, one of them graduated last year, was told that he had to go to Lincoln if he was going to be in the Spanish immersion. And, those kind of things bother me, and don't get me wrong, I love the staff at Lincoln High School, because I know how, what it is to be a teacher. Those are great people. That's a great school. So is Roosevelt, so is the Gorman, so is Sioux Falls Christian. We have wonderful schools in Sioux Falls. But this concept that, you know, we're going to maybe reserve open enrollment, because they have open enrollment, so many, well, the reason they have so many, nobody has an option. And I don't get it. Why can't we have honors programs at Whittier? Why can't we have them at Ben rifle? I mean, there's so many kids that are in Spanish immersion in the southeast corner of Sioux Falls, you think Ben rifle would have them? My three minutes are up.
You can wrap.
But I want to thank you, and I appreciate what you do, and I know you have the kids in the best interest. Thanks.
Thank you. Our last speaker, our public input, is Amy Heinert. Please state your name and address. There might be a relation.
Hi there. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Amy Heinert. I live at 3901 South Bedford Avenue, on the southeast side of Sioux Falls. I have a three and seven-year-old, who are in the district, or going to be in the district. I have the, one of the best jobs in the Sioux Falls School District, I'm the librarian at Harvey Dunn Elementary, and I'm also a proud, third-generation Sioux Falls School District teacher. I've worked in three different buildings in the Sioux Falls School District. And then following this process closely, and I was, I'm, I am encouraged by the district's attempt to create equity at our high schools and middle schools, and I appreciate the efforts by the committee and the board to consider the needs of 24 students. Watching the June 3rd meeting, and those possible changes, and I know you addressed those, but I think there's some issues with open enrollment. A few things were cause for concern, and I started emailing the video to my name, people in my neighborhood, and the, the message that was felt is just that, and I understand the needs of the Spanish immersion program, I taught at Rosa Parks when that program was created. And so I know that there needs to be a lot of open enrollment at, for those kids at that school. But the idea of moving a group of students to make more room for open enrollment with, at one building that already houses two specialized programs, is concerning. And over and over again in that meeting, there was talk of convenience for honors program families. The convenience, the word convenience came up again and again, of open enrolling to Lincoln High School for the honors program. And again, there's no honors program at any of our high schools. All of our high schools have amazing AP programs. And after contacting neighbors, families started to call me back and talk about their experiences. And students who live a block from me, family, a family who lives a block from me, they have an eighth grader at Patrick Henry this year, who is in accelerated classes, they're getting letters from Lincoln High School about their AP classes with information about open enrollment. They're, they live in the Washington District, they're not in a specialized program. Other families, who are, who have been part of the Uli program on the east side of town, different schools, students who are eligible for the honors program expressed that if they committed to that program, that they were expected to attend Lincoln High School. And families that decided not to attend Lincoln High School felt a lot of pushback. And, at that meeting, at the meeting, again, this was an exact quote from the meeting, about moving students to allow growth for open enrollment at Lincoln High School, it would allow, and this is a quote, "still allow for the southern part of the Washington District to open enroll." Those were the words used. And though the, it wasn't explicitly said, the message is understood. And it's frustrating for people in this district, like, we have amazing schools, amazing AP programs at every public high school. Again, it wasn't explicitly said, but it was felt. So I thank you for the work on the committee, thank you for giving me time to speak, I really am appreciative of the consideration for all 24,000... I really am appreciative of the consideration for all 24,000 kids in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all the public input. We appreciate it. We love having our citizens engaged in the process, so we appreciate it. And your children, your community are the most important assets you have, so we appreciate you being involved, and we'll try to do the best we can with what we do. Let's see, let's move on to the board discussion. Should we start with the easier items that we discussed at the work session?
Sure.
Let's move to grandfathering. Any discussion on grandfathering?
Overall grandfathering, like we did before?
Any further discussion from Wednesday or changed minds or whatever? So we can just give a public a heads up, is kind of what I'm.
Broken record, I'm still for allowing seniors if they care to, but I think it's important that get kids rolling where they're supposed to go and not shortchange a new school, students. There's 350 juniors, and I'd love for them to have the option too, but now we start affecting programs at the new school. So I think it's great that we are considering the seniors and let the seniors pick, but I think that's where we got to start.
Further discussion? Oh, thank you.
No, I mean, I agree with Todd. This is what we discussed on Wednesday, and, you know, it's, we need to make sure that we've got enough kids in these schools that we can offer all the programs, all the wonderful programs, including our AP and our arts programs at every school. So I agree with Todd that we just, we allow the seniors to make that choice, but everyone else needs to go where their home attendance center is.
I agree. It's going to be a tough one year, but after the senior class is gone and there's no tag-along, you know, or not the grandfathering in, I think it will hopefully work its way through.
Yeah, I would agree. I, I think we need to have the numbers and get people acclimated to the building that they're going to be in. And similar to when Roosevelt opened, I know there were a lot of kids that were very excited to go and start new traditions and, you know, maybe be the first graduating class from that high school. And so there will be kids that are excited about that as well. Yeah.
I would just say, when we look at the guidelines that were set up as the priorities by the task force.
Nan, will you bring your mic down? Sorry. I'm getting indicated from the back, they can't hear you.
We look at the guidelines that were set up as the priorities by the task force. I think it best honors those priorities and keeps those consistent in just allowing the seniors the choice to graduate from their existing high school. And so based on those priorities, it makes sense to draw the line at the seniors.
Perfect. We'll move on to tag-alongs then. Discussion.
I think this one is the hardest, just because, you know, if you have a family that's already started out of high school, they have that allegiance to that high school and that experience. But ultimately, I believe it becomes kind of a nightmare of tracking and keeping track of who was there and who wasn't. We obviously still have open enrollment options, and so if there are families that are very passionate about wanting to stay at their school, they are welcome to participate in that open enrollment option and petition to have their, their students stay at that location as well. But I think that over time, the number of students that we would be, we would kind of be defeating the purpose of us having new boundaries so that we can even out those populations. So I guess my vote would be the seniors get to stay, but younger siblings would be go to their home attendance area.
I agree. And I, you know what we also talked about last Wednesday during the work session was, you know, this is, this is one year, you know, and, and our previous conversation about grandfathering, that sort of snowballs into this tag-along. So if we continue to, to allow students to either grandfather into a school that they're currently at or allow the siblings, we just constantly create the snowball effect. And if we just, it's a difficult decision to make, but if we just cut this off now, again, the discomfort that everyone will feel is, you know, is a year. And then hopefully by then, everyone is in their school and they've got their friends and they're feeling allegiance to that school. So, I agree.
Yeah, and it becomes logistical, as you stated, and where do you cut it off? You know, because in my mind and personal, well, if it's just tag-alongs, freshman through senior, what does that do? Well, then the next year, there's another, you know, and it just keeps going on and on, like you said, snowballing, so I agree with that. Middle schools, I won't address, so I, I think we all are agreement, it just is seniors and that's it for the grandfathering. Is that correct, unless anyone else wants to bring that up? For middle school grandfathering? We will move on. I would like to open a new topic that has been brought up by people, and we've been more, made more aware of how it works and so forth, and would like to address it. And I would like to make a motion for our policy committee to explore sunsetting, automatic open enrollment for honors to Lincoln High School, because it is sending a message to our, the remainder of the other schools that it is not of the same nature as Lincoln. We can't do that today, we'd have to have a first reading and everything, and I'm not saying it isn't even coming there, but we have two policy committee members, and based on the discussion, and since we're starting out with a new school anyway, it might be the time to kind of look at that and have that option removed so that students can be proud of the school they're at and their home school and feel that their home attendance center is, is up to the snub, because I, I believe it is. So, do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, second discussion.
I, I completely agree. I mean, I think, you know, Carly and I have sat on policy for a number of years, and this was sort of an eye-opener for us when we, when we saw the policy, you know, and whatever you want to say about it, maybe shame on us for not having realized this before, but I think it's time to acknowledge that our high schools all offer the same excellent programming and will continue to do so. And, you know, children that are able to continue in the honors program in middle school, it's wonderful that we've got that option available, but once you get to the high school level, any number, any one of our high schools will be able to provide you with the rigor that you are seeking, so.
And a clarification, this is not, this will change this, this is to direct the policy committee to come up with a plan for sunsetting, because obviously we need to hold up to the agreements we've made with students that are already in the honors program.
Correct, correct.
So we're not directing.
Excuse me?
You're not directing, the motion is not to direct, the sun said it, it's to explore.
Exactly, thank you.
Cynthia, I'd like to add clarification to that.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think of what situation it would be appropriate for any of the high schools to send a letter outside of what would typically be a home attendance to a student. Number two, allowing at the middle school level to do that, that upholds our multiple pathways and makes sense, but is there, would there be a reason, for example, for Washington to send out a letter to athletes across the district saying to come to Washington? I mean, is it just, is this just pointed towards Lincoln?
Maybe address it if I'm incorrect, because he's the expert on this, but.
Because I heard just Lincoln, I say Lincoln with honors?
I'm just talking about honors now. If we wanted to discuss others, I'd be open to it, but I think we should do each one separately if there are other ones you'd like to explore, or you can make an amendment to my motion.
I'd like to amend it to look at, across the board, the high schools, you know, I'd like to look at, when is it appropriate to send a letter to students outside of the home attendance?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. I'd like that clarified further because right now, in policy, there's only, in specialized programs, and it's specific, JCA-R, or, I'm sorry, JCAR?
Lincoln doesn't have a specialized program in honors, correct?
But it's all specialized I'm talking about.
It includes all city.
All city, Spanish immersion and all that. So I'm trying to keep it clean. I, I mean, this, we'll vote on it, but I, I, that's, I'm against the motion to do that because I would like to keep it clean on each individualized, because I don't want one to fail if the others should.
I thought we were looking at the high school level.
Right.
It's not for athletics.
Yeah.
We still have multiple pathways, so it's appropriate for.
Doctor Noel, do they send out those letters?
Those are two different conversations. One of them is in policy as far as honors program, and that was based on cohorts staying together. So that part that you're referencing is in policy in JCA-R. Now, as far as letters, if that was to be changed in policy, it would probably come under code of conduct, which would be an entirely different, it's not in policy, but you were saying that individuals should not be sending out letters from one school to a different school, students in a different school boundary, that's not addressed in the same policy. That would probably be a code of conduct, if that was determined to be something the board would not be in favor of. So the current one that you're talking about with honors and all-city elementary challenge center where they're automatically passed through as cohorts, that's for policy, JCA-R. The other one is not in policy as far as sending letters from one home attendance center to students in a different home attendance center.
Thank you. Further discussion on Nan's motion? Take a vote. Okay. All those in favor of the amendment to my motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Nay? Motion fails. Onto the original motion. Any further discussion on JCA-R in regards to honors exploration of sunsetting, the automatic offer of cohort, cohort at the district-chosen school? Because in code, just so people understand, right now, they are going to Lincoln, but under policy, it just says to a school the district chooses. And so at this point, it is Lincoln. So that's why.
Do we want to also include the all-city group as part of the, in addition to honors? I mean, if we're going to look at it, I feel like we should look at, I think we should look at the whole policy.
The whole policy.
Yeah, and just see what, what our current practice is versus the policy. I think it's, it deserves a conversation.
Do you have a motion to amend?
Some.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the amendment.
So again, we're just saying you're going to.
To disband it to policy. And we'll still have to have a first reading and a second reading. Yep.
Yeah, given that there is existing policy on, on it versus it falling under a code of conduct, being aware of that clarification, because I'd like to just see the, the policy and dive into it a little bit. But thank you for bringing it up and researching that.
Sounds good. Okay. On the amendment, I'll vote on the amendment, and we'll vote on, after that, okay. On the amendment to explore the whole policy, JCA-R, I have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Nay.
The motion carries with win. Thank you. So now we'll vote on the whole package. All those in favor of exploring under the amended JCA-R policy and sending it to policy committee for exploration signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? We have a exploration. So thank you Carly and Kate and Admin for exploring this. Okay, on to, let's go into the middle school options. Maybe let's discuss A and A2. Should we do that? And we can kind of, well, let's start with A, pluses and cons, pros and cons maybe, and see how people feel, and we can move to A2 if people want to discuss that one as well. Discussion on middle school, A.
Can we pull up the, Doug, do you mind?
Do you want the map or that?
Um, this is fine.
Okay. So when I asked for a further, just look at exploration on A, it was because I was looking at some of the numbers here on George McGovern specifically, and was hoping to adjust those a bit. That's why I asked for that tweak. I'm kind of jumping ahead, but that's, I guess, I'm not as in favor of option A unless there was a tweak involved moving that west of T Ellis to George McGovern.
I'm in favor of option A because it eliminates some of the west-side crowding, and then it still splits the specialty schools, and I explained on Wednesday, to stay where I was before.
I think for me, looking at A versus the, the change made in blue there, I like that it improves the demographics of George McGovern, which is already a little bit higher in the free and reduced lunch compared to the other ones, and so it brings it down. When I look at that neighborhood just west of T Ellis, that is going to be an area of growth in the future, I don't know how far in the future, it's hard to, hard to guess that since we just acquired the land. But I know that I've heard from many people over the past, you know, months, that I bought my house because it was in X school district, and now you might change it. And so for me, because that land is not well-developed at this point, I feel like it's us being upfront with people when they buy or build a house in that area that they know that this is my school. And so I don't want to have this conversation again in five years and have people who are angry at that point who say, "I bought my house two years ago because I was going to X middle school and X high school, and now you're changing it." And so for me, it makes sense to make that change now when it's a small number of people that are being impacted and move them up to George McGovern to establish that neighborhood as a George McGovern neighborhood and a Thomas Jefferson neighborhood. So as people move in there, they come in with that idea and that thought of that's where my child is going to school, and they have that future look ahead to where their child will be going.
I have to agree with Carly. I think it makes sense, you know, we, we have to plan more than a few years out, and even if it's five years or 10 years, we need these boundaries to hold for quite a while. So I would agree with that, that change of moving that portion up to George McGovern.
Nan, do you have any feedback? I'll take anything that's, that's new to what you all are saying, but I just want clarification. You're calling the George McGovern swamp is moving up, that would be called A2. Correct? Just to make sure we have this.
West of T Ellis.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's that small area west of T Ellis in addition to the Cherry Lake area, which is also west of T Ellis.
So those two. Got it. But yeah, we'd use T Ellis as the boundary, a natural boundary.
Kind of like in option B.
Yeah, moving them up to George McGovern as we allow for growth in that Lennox area, keeping that cohort together and then.
And it's not just for, I know some people will have further commute, but as Doug showed on that other graphic, we can't look at individual driving times as much as I would like to, but we have to look at our district as a whole, and as, if we can rationally show that the average mileage is not effectively changed within our things, we knew there were going to be changes. Memorial and Roosevelt are over-enrolled, we can't, it's not sustainable regardless of what we do. we knew there were going to be changes. Memorial and Roosevelt are over-enrolled. We can't, it's not sustainable regardless of what we do. And so we have to make these changes, and it's going to be our job as a district to really help facilitate with the families and with the district to make sure we can overcome obstacles that will be caused by the changes that we are making.
And we looked at those distance numbers. Cynthia, there wasn't a substantial difference within the high schools on that distance. There, I think it was like point zero two between the two, so.
And the, with A2, I think even the average distance came down for George McGovern.
Yeah.
Any comments on A2? I'll move on to B. Middle school option B, pros or cons? Somebody wanted to call in.
For me, for option B, I feel like the, what, the one thing that I, that I don't like is that in that little piece that juts down in purple for George McGovern, that I believe is the Oscar Howe busing area. Doug, is that correct? And so that little purple part where it's jutting down into, and it's George McGovern, they're being bused north to, to their middle school. But then when it comes time for them to go to high school, they're switched back to Roosevelt. So they're with their peers, then they go one direction, and then when they're done with middle school, we bring them back the other direction. And so in trying to keep cohorts together, which we've heard from people is important from a social aspect, to me, that one doesn't meet that. Whereas in the first option, I understand that JFK would be bused to Edison, but then everyone from Edison in turn turns around and goes back to Roosevelt. And so those cohorts stay together through that entire path versus kind of taking this whole school and moving it north and then bringing it back down to rejoin the other schools. So I think that's one of the things that sticks out to me as a, as a difference for that one.
Would you go back to that other graphic? And I proposed that honors to Patrick, so I'll call it B2, the blue line under option B. I wanted to see those numbers because I'm still concerned if both honors or Spanish immersion are in one middle school, that we hinder those programs and we're not spreading other, you know, students in both. So I wanted those examined, and I guess if it was going to be in the option B area, arena, I am more in favor of option B2 because I think we both improve the demographics and it allows to, those two specialized programs to grow and not overtake any one middle school.
And what were those numbers? We got them last week. How many students are impacted or meet the criteria of both honors and Spanish immersion? Was it another thirty?
Yeah, it was thirty.
Thirty. So when we put that into perspective.
Next year, coming into sixth grade at Edison, there'll be thirty-three honors Spanish immersion students.
So when we look at those thirty-three and how that impacts an entire area of students in terms of priority number one, the quality of education, specifically balancing the economic status, there is more to reckon with and in consideration of that in its totality versus thirty-three kids. So just maybe to weigh that and have some sensitivity towards those numbers.
And I think I would just add that in talking with Dr. Boyson, it's not that those classes would not be available. So for example, if there's thirty-three students that would qualify for an honors class that they would program, they would offer that programming at Edison to those thirty-three students that qualified for that class. And so it's not that the programming would be removed altogether. We will still be serving the needs of the students. It just doesn't have the entire program there at the same time. So again, still being able to look at that from a curriculum standpoint to say, what makes sense? And how can we help these students to continue to be challenged, but help them to maintain their other program as well?
Yes. And really, it's, since all of our middle schools have accelerated classes, it's really just the accelerated geometry and biology classes that will be affected with their high school credit. So, but I think we still need to make, see how we can make it still work to allow that. So we can allow those students to continue on those paths if they're in Spanish and not have to leave the program.
Right. Not only does it look at the balancing economic status, but it also meets with the first priority. If we're looking at A being economic status, B being the space in programs, it fulfills that criteria of looking ahead to the growth of each of those programs and really maintaining it at the highest level possible for the maximum amount of students. So it meets that equitable space for programs.
And I can't remember who said it, if it was Ann or if it was you, Dr. Boyson, about there's a science study going on that hopefully will end up with the result being that biology will be offered at all middle schools. So we won't have to worry about that as a class being offered hopefully because that will just be a standard in all of our middle schools across the board.
Yep. And so when we think about all those high school courses, whether it's at Edison or any other high, middle school, we have to make sure we have a cohort large enough to be able to do that and to allocate the FTE for that. And so yes, that was a discussion with middle school principals this morning about biology at all our middle schools. So it's open to everyone. Again, we look at that opportunity, and if the, the numbers aren't large enough, they always have the option to go to their high school for biology, geometry. So any of those courses are offered to all students at all middle schools. And we do have other students at other middle schools who are taking advantage of those options and have for a long time.
Thank you.
And I, I'd like to add, I mean, I think an argument we hear about that is, you know, maybe kids miss out on being part of student council or, you know, other activities in their school in the mornings. And I think this is just a decision that, you know, a difficult decision that families ultimately have to make. And what are the priorities? So while we want to have kids have all of these opportunities, if they have expressed the interest to take a more rigorous class for, you know, to help with their college career or their high school career, rather, I think those are just choices that families ultimately have to make.
Further discussion on B or B2? I think I'm hearing it's closer between A2 and B2. If I'm, let's say, I know you were a regular, but I think it's the one. So do we want to discuss the differences between A2 and B2 and what we see?
Again, I, I think I fall along the lines with Carly with, you know, with option B. Just having that, you know, Oscar Howe cohort kind of jumping back and forth just doesn't make sense to me. I think option A2 makes the most sense in my opinion.
I would say that's where I'm at as well, is A2 would be my preference at this point.
I'm leaning towards A2. I'd like to see how the high school discussion goes and see if they'll line up the best. But that's where I'm leaning as well.
I mean, I think there, right, there's different defining features to both. And, yeah, let's talk about the high school and maybe some things will fall in line with what's going to make best sense between A2 and B2. What about, did Todd with the?
Todd, any further for A?
Embarrassingly enough, my hearing aid batteries both died at the same time, so I'm barely hearing any of you.
I'm sorry.
What did you just have?
My husband wishes he was you.
We're good to go.
Are you okay to move on with high school?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Okay, let's go to high school option. I'm glad we can all giggle a little still. This is very emotional, I know. So, high school option A. Oh, could we go to the map for high school A and C?
Right in front.
Perfect. Is it hot in here?
Try having your hearing aid batteries die if you want to get hot.
So yeah, A, C, and then the R options, the Facebook one that was presented.
I guess two things defining features of option A. So when we look at the priority number one, the quality of education for all students, specifically the balancing the economic status, A had an overall mix that would support an economic status that was a variety the best. C was slightly favored on priority number four, the natural borders based upon the distance. And then again, A, what sticks out is the priority five, accommodate the growth and the change when we take into consideration some of the open enrollment for the various high schools. So that's just an observation.
I, option A to me, both, when you look at the geography, it's pretty equal, little bit better in A, well, no, it's a little bit better in C, I'm sorry. But for Jefferson, which is our furthest away, it was just a little bit better, I think I noticed. And then, but if you look at the economic status, it's better in A across the board for the four schools. I felt like more evenly distributed. And when our boundaries were done 25 years ago, they did such a good job about making that pretty equal. And that's why we have three really great high schools at this point. So I'd like to continue that effort. And since the geographic is not altered too much, you know, we're not seeing a jump of three to four miles or something between the routes for the average distance, I feel like option A meets more of my, of the five requirement or guidelines.
I think for me, option A was created based on the option of the middle schools being kind of co-horted into those high schools. And so I like that aspect of it so that we can keep peer groups and, and cohorts together. And so A does that in addition to what President Mickelson said regarding the demographics. I think that this is our time to really kind of even those out as much as we can to ensure that our buildings do include as many different opportunities and differences in people that we can. Ironically enough, we just got a letter from somebody that has some information, an article in there saying that when students are matched with other students of higher economics, that it's actually the students surrounding them that have the higher economic status that impacts their own growth and their own knowledge more so than their own economics itself. So the more that we can make those buildings equal, we can help to impact all of our students in a positive way. And so I think looking at where we're at with the percentages across the board, I feel like A offers the, the best across the board for all of our high schools from a free and reduced price lunch status.
I'm on C. I feel the same way I did on Wednesday.
Thank you. Just want to make sure.
I think it's a nice, clean line. I like the way it brings the kids to Jefferson. Just leave it at that.
I would like to thank Doug and his team for all the work that they did in short time on adding to our option piece of it. Because I do think it's important that we not just look at the picture of it, count the students and say, no, that's not going to work. But by really comparing it to all of these other statistics regarding the numbers, the free and reduced price lunch, things like that, I think it just, for me, what really stands out is having sixty-four percent of free and reduced lunch at a, at our brand-new high school just doesn't seem like a good service that we would be providing to that neighborhood when we have the opportunity to do better. And so that doesn't sit well with me. I want to, again, to make that as equal as possible. And so while I understand that that might, you know, change transportation and change activities and things like that, I think that big picture, that's the, the right thing to do. And so that to me is the leading reason why I'm not able to support our option. That's not to say that I don't appreciate the time and effort that was put into that because we've just asked for the information that's been handed to us. So I can't imagine sitting and plugging all this stuff into, and being a community member and trying to access that information. And so I appreciate the time that they, that the group, and specifically Megan, put into creating that. And I wish that the numbers looked better so that I could get behind that. But unfortunately, based on the economics of it, I just don't think it makes sense for us at this time.
Yes, and coupled with the mileage, it was not a better average district mileage improvement that could make its way one or the other. You know, we had the five guidelines, and I think we've all been accused of we're only focusing on the one. But we did look at the distances as well affected by all the A, C, and R option combined with that. And when one so, raises one so high, it just becomes unacceptable.
I just keep looking, I'm going back and forth between, you know, the middle school options and the high school options and trying to, trying to kind of figure out where the middle schools lay within here. And I, I, I think I'm leaning towards high school option A just because it looks like it's a pretty clear, you know, split between some of the middle schools. So, you know, part of, you know, part of Memorial will, you know, could, I think, go to Jefferson. You know, part of Edison will go to Jefferson. And so I'm seeing pretty evenly split districts, I think, and I think that's important to, for our high schools.
The thing about it, in A, Ben rifle's going to Washington. Then you have Patrick Henry going to Lincoln. You have Edison going to Roosevelt. And then we had this sort of split Whittier and, and Memorial. And the way we did Memorial in A is we, we kept the discovery, we use the discovery boundary. So you can see down there how that goes down. That's the, so they go, discovery would go discovery, then Memorial, and then Jefferson. So it was, whereas if you just do a flat border, you're splitting that school. So that was, that was sort of the reasoning behind that and how we divided up to make those numbers work. But you basically have four middle schools feeding in their entirety to high schools. And then just sure numbers, you have to divide the two up. So we divided Whittier and Memorial. If you had to, just remember numbers, but try to keep at least a cohort together. Realizing that, yes, they're closer to Roosevelt, but they're also the closest to Jefferson.
Right.
You know, besides when you get into green spaces and things like that. So that was kind of the reasoning behind that.
So when we overlay, let me back up. We talked at the middle school level about the Lenox area and the growth for that and how, how we may be accommodating that. And if we overlay then the high school and the situation there in light of the, the cohorts feeding a single high school. feeding a single high school, it's clear that option A makes sense when we take into consideration the totality of that conversation. As far as cohorts feeding a single high school, and how that impacts priority number, let's see, it would be, would really be sort of that priority.
Five.
And five, both four and five. So, yeah, priority four and five.
Thanks for correcting me, Doug. Like going back and forth and going, okay, are they?
There's been a lot of information out here, so keeping it straight.
So, I guess at this time, I would make a motion to support A2 from the middle school.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of A2 as an option for the middle school signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Nay.
So, I believe we had four to one in A2. Remember, this is just a tentative vote, this final vote. We're still open for topic, but this is just giving the public more time to, now that they see what we've narrowed it down to, to come back at us with any more concerns than questions. Should we, does anyone want to make, anyone want to make a motion on the high school?
I'll make my motion on high school option A.
I second.
Two seconds. I have a motion on second on high school option A. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. And once again, that is tentative as well. The other thing we've all discussed as well is possibly, we need to help with long-term planning on all of our specialty programs and where they're going to be in the future so that these buildings aren't, all of them, you know, it's just not, if we're getting these programs so big that they need to maybe look at multiple sites, or just all the sites have that, you know, depending on cohort. And I know that's not today, and I know it's not next year, and it's not even probably when the new school's open. But it's just so that we can have a good roadmap for where that goes to help these boundaries stay in place for a longer timeframe as well, so that the programs aren't pushing out the inboundered students from their schools. So, we've all discussed that, and I'm not asking for a motion or anything, but maybe we can all be thinking about that and how we want to talk to the district and help with that planning. So, thank you. Any other discussion on? Oh, yeah, let's do talk about those, sorry. Some of the additional considerations.
What, what additional considerations?
These from the meeting?
From last. Page 15, right?
Okay.
Starts on?
Well, we talked about A.
Yeah, I think we've got that. And B. Anybody want to take on?
So, B was just, if we do go with option A, it would, it would just include moving that small square into the Rosa Parks area, which would then also be part of Ben rifle. So, at this time, I think it's got fewer than 50 students in that area, and then they could stay with their Rosa Parks cohort. Are they Annie Sullivan right now, or where are they at right now?
That Rosa Parks 50, yeah.
They're part of Rosa Parks.
Oh, so.
So, we just want to bring that nub into Ben rifle.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. So, they're currently in Rosa Parks, but they were going to go to Whittier.
Yeah, and there's no reason, we'll just leave them.
Discussion on that.
That makes sense. Do we need to amend our middle school then, option to include that little piece?
Yep.
Well, since it's not an official vote.
Since it's an official vote, let's just have a vote on B maybe, and then people can know.
And then, we could see the revised numbers on that.
Yep.
Correct.
That'd be great. So, do you have a motion on amending A2 to include option B from the items for consideration on page 15?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? At carries. Okay, option C.
We don't have to worry.
We don't have to worry that, because it was option B. And then, high school boundaries, I think we've already discussed that option as not being.
Talked about A.
Yeah, that's A and B are kind of together. Yeah. So, I think we can move on to the elementary school boundaries one.
Hold on, Cynthia, can you back up? What did we decide with A?
A and B on the high school ones was the one we decided not to engage in, which is the Whittier swap with the 44 students.
Okay.
And the 400 and some on that upper part.
I'm just looking at how that aligns with the updated map.
Yep.
Got it.
And if you want to, please do, bring them up. I'm not trying to tell anybody, but that's what we had discussed before, so, okay.
Yeah.
Awesome. Elementary school boundaries, let's see, this is the one with the Horace Mann Old Neighborhood for Rosa Parks, they're going to, to add them back, add them to SBA because of their location. Anybody would like to make a motion on that?
And remind me, Doug, you guys have been speaking with these families to kind of gauge their interest in.
You know, it was, it was when we took Horace Mann offline and made it bridges, we sent that cohort to Rosa Parks, and they're just contiguous to that. So, I think it makes sense. We've been working with them, offering them, the ones that want to go this year, offering them, you know, asking if they would go ahead of time and busing or not busing. So, we've been in dialogue with them, so.
Thank you.
I think we've given them.
Heads up. I think it makes sense, so I'll make a motion to move that portion to Susan D. Anthony.
Second.
I have a motion on second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? At carries. Tentative. There's nothing. Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, Doug. We can move on.
So, then I'm just, I'm assuming then, with all the, even the additions that we just discussed and voted on, those will be sort of part of our second reading package all together?
Yep, and if we could get that on the district website as soon as possible for the public to view, to kind of see where we ended up, where we're leaning, so they have that knowledge as well, if they weren't watching or in the meeting, or if it's hard to follow when you don't have everything in front of you as well, that would be great, so.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm asking my agenda. We will go to the English Language Proficiency Update from Debbie Moon. Thank you.
All right, good evening. I am here today to give you an update on our results from this year's WIDA assessment. And the WIDA assessment comes from our membership in the WIDA Consortium. The WIDA Consortium constitutes 35 member states spread out over the United States. And because South Dakota is a member state, that means all school districts in the state of South Dakota automatically are WIDA Consortium members as well. The goal of the consortium is to advance the academic language development of students who are identified as English learners, and to allow us to have access to the tools and assessment devices that keep us in compliance with the federal government and their legislation. Specifically, the access for EL's 2.0 assessment is given annually. It covers the four domains of reading, speaking, listening, and writing. We give it to all students in grades K through 12 who are identified as EL. Our kinders take that assessment on paper each year. However, our grades 1 through 12 use technology assistance in the taking of that assessment. That test is given each year in late January through February. And so, due to our remote learning, this year, we were able to get that assessment in and get that completed. So, that was helpful for us, because that would have been increasingly difficult if that would have happened in the middle of that. So, we are grateful for that piece. Proficiency levels in those four domains are, we get a score for each one of those four domains, and we also get a composite score for each student. So, each student gets five different scores back when they take that assessment. And the assessment additionally is used to determine when a student can access, or sorry, can exit the program. So, in addition to measuring their growth, it helps us identify when they can exit our program. As far as state accountability goes, let me make sure I got that. Okay. As far as our state accountability goes, and the exit criteria specifically, students can exit the program when they score a 5.0 or higher as a composite score. That was a change made a couple of years ago, so we are in year three of those changes now. This year, there was a waiver submitted to the U.S. Department of Ed on behalf of the South Dakota Department of Education, and that waiver was going to allow our students, one additional prong, per se, to exit the EL status. And what that waiver says is that if students achieve a 4.0 or higher composite score on the WIDA, and they get a three or higher, three or four on the South Dakota ELA assessment, which was formerly known as the Smarter Balance Assessment, they would also exit the program that way, too. So, not only it works for students in grades three through eight and 11, but it is one additional way that would allow students to exit the EL status. Unfortunately, we didn't give the South Dakota ELA assessment this year, so for this year, we are limited to just students who scored a 5.0 or higher on the WIDA access assessment. Our EL student growth is currently 10% of our school report card for each school and for our district inside of that accountability model or the School Performance Index. So, taking a look at what we actually looked like as a Sioux Falls school district in terms of EL students in 1920, we had 2,763 students who took the WIDA assessment, sorry, and participated in the WIDA assessment. We had 2,747 of them took the regular assessment. That assessment does allow students to exit. We had 16 who needed to take the alternate assessment due to their special needs. Just a point of note, students who take that alternate assessment are not allowed to exit the program. So, they will remain under that EL status as long as they take that alternate assessment. On the last day of school, we had 2,787 students in our district identified as EL. Means we've had some move-in since the WIDA assessment. How did we do? And I know this graph is a little bit difficult to read necessarily, so I'm going to kind of highlight those areas. Again, we get a score in listening, speaking, writing, reading, and a composite score of all of those put together based on different percentages. It's not split 25, 25, 25, and 25. There's a different percentage that goes to each one of those. And so, that's how the composite score is figured. But across there, you can see that that gray bar in each category on the right of each one of those clusters represents the students that achieve .5 or higher growth in each one of those areas. That's our goal always for students, is to at least reach that .5 or higher growth. We did pretty well in some areas, and we know that we have work to do in other areas. Specifically, the last two years, we have worked very hard, grades K through 12, in the area of speaking and the area of writing. We call those output scores, because those are the, those are the pieces of the language where students have to produce the language. The reading and the listening are what we call input scores. That's where students intake the English language and process it. And we typically, both here in Sioux Falls, in the state of South Dakota, and in the nation, students typically do poorer on the output scores than they do the input scores. So, we continue to make those an area of focus. We've done a lot of research on what exactly the assessment is comprised of, and we work really hard with students throughout the year in order to do better in those areas. But we still have work to do, and we recognize that. Doug and Nicole did a really good job of putting together a lot of specific data for us this year when the WIDA results came back, and taking a look at distributions across the grade levels. And one area that helps determine some of these trends is that we've identified we have a lot of work to do with the middle school level. There's some different pieces that play into that puzzle. One of those pieces is that the rigor and the standard setting for the middle school test changes drastically from fifth grade to sixth grade. And so, we always work really hard with our elementary students and our elementary teachers to get as many students to exit by fifth grade as possible, just because we know the difficulty and the rigor of that academic language increases significantly when they move into that middle school and high school tier. So, while they are in middle school, since we do know that that's an area that we need to really concentrate on and improve programming, we have plans in place next year to implement the ELD, which stands for English Language Development Course, parallel to what we have done in the high school for the last two years, and really focus on all four domains rather than just reading at the middle school. So, students, instead of being in a reading intervention class just and working on reading, they'll tackle reading intervention in addition to speaking, listening, and writing. And we'll work on all four of those domains with our middle school students in order to put together, together a better preparation for them in their language acquisition process. As far as the number of students this year, though, who did exit, we are pretty similar in our numbers from last year. So, we had 114 who exited in grades K through 5. We had two who exited at the middle school, which, again, this goes back to, I mean, this is just exit. We had a lot of students who weren't expected to exit this year but made growth. And so, this is just looking at the distribution of the exited students, though. And then, we had 42 who exited at the high school. So, when I talk about the success we have seen in the last two years by having that English Language Development class for our high school students, I think you can kind of see here how that has really increased our numbers from 2018 to 2020, and we hope to continue to grow that as we work with that course and develop that curriculum. The largest number of students that remain out of that 2,605 who will still be needing services moving forward, the largest number of them are in our elementary school. We have 1,523 of those students that are in grades K through 5. Specifically of that, we have 1,348 who are in grades K through 4. That's significant, because anybody in grades K through 4 has not transitioned into what we call long-term EL status yet, and that means that they're still within that five years working towards exiting. And so, the, where, since the majority of the students who still need service are in that band, that's good news. That means we're still working with them to make progress, and we haven't transitioned them into that long-term EL status yet. And additionally, within the numbers who are in grades 6 through 12, there are a lot of students who have come to us as newcomers and are not long-term EL. So, just because they're in middle school or high school and still classified as EL, they haven't all been here since kindergarten, so a lot of them are still in their first five years in the country as well. This is the first year we have had what we call an EL cohort that was expected to exit. And so, this is just a little bit of distribution of those numbers who did exit this year and where they fall into the different cohorts. We had 663 students who were first-time test takers, and 12 of those exited this year. So, that's fabulous. We had 26 of our expected 155 students. Everybody, three years ago, when all those standards were reset, went into an initial phase again, and so they either had three, four, or five years to exit starting three years ago. So, this was why this is the first year of an expected cohort group. And so, the remaining students fall into either the next year's 2021 cohort, and then so on. You can see that there. So, since we had 12 new, new test takers exit and 26 current cohort exit, we still had 129 that were supposed to exit this year that will need to exit next year, because they'll move into that new cohort group. So, they're in that carryover column. We had 37 who were seniors this year, so those get subtracted out of next year's cohort. That leaves us with 538 students that will be expected to exit next year. So, that's a considerable jump from the 155 that were expected to exit this year, and we have a lot of work to do. But we have a lot of students who are right there. We had well over 200 students that were between a 4.8 and a 4.9. So, they were so close, but just didn't quite get there. And so, we want to make sure that we work really hard with those students to work in those one or two areas that are significantly lower than their other areas, their domains, and make sure that we get them to that exiting status next year and can continue to grow the percentage of our students who exit each year. One of the things, too, that we talked, I know President Mickelson asked me about, why are we continuing to have growth in our total numbers? And we're kind of plateauing with exiting, and how does that all play into part? So, I wanted to make a comment on that, too, that we, for the last three years, have had our kinder numbers, our incoming kindergartners, increase significantly each year, by 30, by 50 over the prior year, this year by 68 over the prior year. By 30, by 50 over the prior year, this year by 68 over the prior year. And so we want, I want to make sure that I note that those students don't go really necessarily through the intake office as newcomers to the district. We are registering them as kinders, and we're testing them as kinders, but they start in their home attendance centers or in their center sites, and they're not part of that intake office number, although that number is drastically increasing each year. A lot of those kindergartners are born in America. A lot of them are born inside of Sioux Falls or in South Dakota. And so they are EL because they grow up in a family where English is not the primary language. So they qualify as EL, and we, we have services to provide to them in order to become bilingual students. And that really kind of tells the story of why we continue to increase numbers of students that remain to need services each year, but we aren't seeing as many in the intake. And it's not a drastic decrease, but with all of the news media that, and all the information that you hear about with the caps on refugees coming into the country, that has affected Sioux Falls as well, and we just are not seeing a lot of that. What we are seeing is secondary migrants, which are people who are moving around within the United States but still qualify for EL services. Just a final look at how the remaining students disperse over the 1 through 5 WEDA level. You can see that the majority of our students are in what we call that Level 3 or that developing band at the bottom. And the second biggest area is that Level 4, which is wonderful because that means they're the closest group to exiting. And then 2 is the purple on the right, and 1 is the green or the emerging area. And so we have a good distribution of our students at a variety of language levels, and we continue to work with them in order to gain proficiency and, like I said, become bilingual or trilingual, or for some of them, it's, it is a fourth language. So it's exciting, and we love the work that we do in this department. But we know that we are, we always have room to improve, and so we will continue to work from a curriculum perspective to make those improved improvements. But if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you for answering my questions I had asked previously in your report. The follow-up to that would be, what is going on this summer? And maybe when we go back in the fall to help reassess if what was lost due to remote learning and where, you know, maybe get a good base and foundation for these children.
Sure. Good question. We had summer school happen for EL students at, at elementary, middle school, and high school. In fact, elementary and high school are still happening throughout the month of June. We, the, the reports back from the middle school teachers who finished last week with their middle school program said that there was a large number of students that were sad it was ending. They have enjoyed that face-to-face communication with their teachers and wished it was going on all summer. So we have addressed some language areas through those extended summer programs. At the elementary level, it's our Elementary Emergence Center, who is continuing on through the month of June, and those teachers are working not just with packets but remotely, and they have had wonderful success at the Elementary Emergence Center throughout remote learning on keeping students engaged through video sessions, and we've had, we've had good response that way. And then for high school, we are offering three classes. We're offering speech, we're offering personal finance, and we're offering health. So all three very important credit-bearing classes for our high school students. And at all levels, the focus is really on getting those students to practice their speaking. And so we maintain that verbal piece of the English language acquisition. However, when they come back in the fall, we know those are some areas we're going to need to assess and figure out what that slide has looked back, looked like for each student and make sure we address those areas so that we continue to make that growth. But we're very aware that it's a hurdle that's in front of us, and we're going to really need to do some assessing and taking advantage of every day that we have those students in front of us. We've added a few curricular programs and increased some licenses at the elementary level in order to help those students have access if we have to jump back into remote learning. So they will practice having access to those programs while they are face-to-face. If we're able to start the year that way, so that when we are transitioning in and out, that will be a routine procedure from them, and they'll have that ability to practice not just the listening and the reading, but the speaking and the writing as well.
I'd be curious, with the numbers of kinders that are coming in and those numbers, what sites are we seeing those, those sites we particularly might want to look at adding more junior kindergarten at to help with the transition for students since we don't have preschools, you know, for everyone? If that might be an option we can look at.
I would tell you that what we, what I do know off the top of my head without doing some research, and I can certainly get you those numbers, is that in all of our center sites except for Hawthorne, the kinders have increased each year. So Hawthorne is really the only one that we haven't seen that same growth. But I can certainly get you some more specific numbers, too.
I was just going to add on your, you have your elementary, you know, with great growth, and then kind of middle school and high school, and obviously, high school, we added that intervention. But I think that also speaks to the fact that language gets harder to learn the older that you get. So when we have those students in elementary school and they're little sponges that really, they don't have maybe that embarrassment of making a mistake when you say something and things like that, I think that it's easier for them to learn, just like for any of us trying to learn a second language. The older you get, the harder it is on your brain to be able to be flexible and think about that. So I think that's part of the challenge as well, but certainly not something that's not insurmountable.
We talk as a middle school group about making sure we work with our teachers constantly to not let students, EL students off the hook when we're asking them questions and to ask them those higher-level academic questions, which causes them to extend their discourse, not just a yes or a no answer, but really using that academic language as they speak. It's hard when they're struggling to put those words together to not just say, oh, you know what, we'll move on to the next student, let that student answer that question. So we have to work hard as, as teachers to, to hold them accountable to using their language and give them the time to formulate those responses.
Questions for Demi. Do you have a motion to acknowledge the update on the English Language Proficiency Report? Second. A motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I propose same sign. The report is acknowledged. Dr. Knoll.
See if the technology pulls up.
It's probably overheated.
And it works. So tonight's report is the Return to Learning, our R2L, which is our planning for the 2020 summer, which is obviously currently in process already in the 2020, 2021 school year in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And so the purpose of this report. The purpose of this report is to provide that update to the board, and it really cross-sections all priority areas with the student outcome, school climate, our culture, our staff, and our community engagement, and specifically hits on that priority statement number three. The Sioux Falls School District will provide a nurturing and safe learning experience for all students. So as we go through this, it does cut across each one of the disciplines and our, our strategic plans, but specifically that with the safe learning environment. The explanation on this piece of it, we worked hard as a group to be able to care for the social, emotional, the physical, and the academic well-being of the students, and we broke it into two parts. One being the summer planning process that is currently, as you know, in play, and then the start of the 2021 school year. And it's probably the third most question I get asked behind boundaries and behind open enrollment is will we have school in the fall? And the answer is an absolute yes. What format? That I don't know. As we go through this planning process, we'll start with the summer piece of it. And you can kind of see as I go through some of the dates here, every piece of this is overlaid with the health aspect. Molly Satter works obviously extensively with the CDC guidelines and our city officials that work in the health. And we put all those pieces in place with each one of these dates as we go through. We did have the first part of that when we were still in the remote learning with the return of the property to the students and to the school district. That, again, was overlaid with multiple safety procedures and protocols that we had utilized. May 18th was the first date that we had the, the district offices where our staff were back into those district offices, but it was not open for community access at that time. We kicked that ahead to May 26th. May 26th was that first date then when we did open back up our district offices. So it was a gradual process into where you knew and have heard about with the June 1st, the Kids' Inc. services. And that was something that had a lot of people in our community a little bit nervous and wondering, will that be available? Because obviously, anything we do in the Sioux Falls School District significantly impacts our, our community. June 13th, as we look ahead, we did have to cancel ACT tests that were earlier in the spring. And so now this would be the first opportunity on the 13th for that ACT to be given again at the high school setting. We again follow with that ACT. We need to follow the guidelines laid out by the ACT. We also follow the CDC guidelines and then additional guidelines that we will have incorporated through the Sioux Falls School District when we work with our health officials here. The next date's on there, the June 15th, and that was referenced already with the summer activities. That would go along with the lessons, whether that's fine and performing arts or the activities with athletics as they begin those small group or individual workouts. And there's an entire set of guidelines that were sent out and created through the help and support of our health department as far as what we need to follow for those summer activities. We will begin then with the graduation, as you know, on the 27th and 28th. And the 29th is the first time that we'll start to see that the classes resume back at the schools. We will have some students that'll come in for individual basis for summer recovery, especially towards graduation at our high school levels. But on the 29th of June is where we really start to see the Summer Connections classes, the Middle School Running Start, and Driver's Ed, all important aspects of, of groups coming in and small groups as we break those out into the high school and middle school settings. July 6th, multiple things come into play with our extended school year, the birth to three. As we look at some of those auxiliary programs of Summit Oaks and Structured Teach and the Ready to Start programs being in there. Some of those are governed by some, some federal approval that needs to be completed as well. But as you see, as we go through the summer, we're starting to add more and more students back into that mix, small groups, and still following a lot of those guidelines. The 18th will give us that second opportunity with the ACT. And then July 20th is the first time where we're starting with the Jump Start. It's a program that we've just started and will utilize for kindergarten and first-grade students. It'll be at eight sites with reduced numbers at each of those. I think it'll go up to a maximum of about 73 students, but they're broken into small groups of students to really start to, to recover some of that academic learning loss that may have occurred in the spring of the year. That's a Jump Start program. It's new for this year, and it'll just include our K and first-grade students at those eight sites. Then we kick into the 2021 school year, and the work is ongoing in this at this time. We started out with our guiding team, then we have four pillars, and I'll hit on those four pillars. And it's always covered, again, by our public health umbrella where we look at what things need to be implemented to make sure our students are safe. So we start with the guiding team, and obviously led by Dr. Maher, and Dr. Stamen has been involved in many of those conversations as well. But that team really looks at all the pillars to make sure they all align with each other and what resources we have. So I'll break that into the groups that we have, and you see this diagram. There's four teams, the four pillars, the one instructional corps led by Dr. Boyson. It really looks at the curriculum aspect, and special education obviously intertwined in that as well. But it's truly the, the curricular aspect of things and all the things that'll be impacted by that. The second team in there, the operations, is chaired by myself, and we work on all the parts that will go in and support that, the technology, the facility changes that we may have to do, the transportation, especially if we go into remote learning or we need to reduce the number of students, food service and health services. So you kind of see those two groups. And we go into the third one is communication. Dan Conrad chairs that group and, and has started already with sending out that information, and will follow up with some surveys here in the near future to be able to get input from our community so we can truly build a plan that will help to meet the needs of all the individuals that, that we're going to have back into our schools or if we need to accommodate in other ways. The fourth, which is a vital piece, and that's the resources. Because there's some ideas that come up and are vetted that just truly we cannot do just purely based on resources and budget. It's just not a viable option. And so we, we put all those in conjunction with our public health and the CDC guidelines and working with our, our health officials here in town. But that's the core areas. The next part that I'll show you on that as we go through in the planning process is we're really looking then, all of that based on the model of instructional delivery. So depending on what happens in our community or in our schools, we will utilize that model of instructional delivery to determine where we go. The first one is our traditional daily instruction. It's the one that most of us would prefer to be back into starting this fall. And so that, really, our students and our staff would not know anything different per se in their schedules. They go through the schedule, the start of the school day, the classes they would take, the courses they'd be sitting in, their class sizes. There'd be a lot of things that we would alter within the buildings, whether it's the, you know, individuals that would need to wear masks, depending on where they're at, individuals that are staff that would work with the public and protective barriers per se with that. So some of those physical changes that we would implement throughout our, in same way, hand sanitization stations throughout the school, different things that would change in the lunch program. We wouldn't have the self-serve, or they'd all be using the same utensils. So things like that will change, but as far as our students going through the traditional schedule, that would remain in there. So that's the first one, and each of us build our plans off of that traditional model. The second one that has not been worked on as much because we're taking it first with the traditional, then we're going to the remote learning, then we're working on the modified on-campus. The modified on-campus, for example, if we had been out for five weeks and we were allowed to come back into school, how do we transition back in? Do we bring everybody back in at once? Do we do a rolling process where we'll be in for a week and back out for a week? Do we do it where we need to reduce the overall numbers in the school? We're an A, B, C, D schedule where we have only a fourth of the students in at a time? Or A, B schedule where we have half the students in at a time so we can do more of that social distancing aspect? And the same way with the busing, so we can reduce the number of individual students needing to ride on a bus on a specific time. So that's the one, the modified on-campus, be dictated if something happens in our community, we have to reduce the numbers in our school. The remote learning process, we obviously have been through. We've done a lot of additional work on that as far as interviewing groups of teachers. And I know Dr. Boyson had put together groups of teachers that she had talked with on the curricular aspect of changes that we need to do to have a better product for that remote learning. That one, we're familiar with. We ended the school year on it, but I think what we would provide in the fall would be a much better model of that remote learning. So that's really the three groups. And then the fourth area, so the, the traditional, the modified on-campus remote learning would probably handle the bulk of all our students. But also have an understanding, there could be some individuals that may not be able to return to us in the fall for different, a variety of different reasons, maybe health-related or other concerns. We're working on also currently at this time, the virtual model of which, which would help to provide some of those educational services, would provide a different group of, of teachers that would provide that virtual educational learning. And so we're doing that in conjunction as we're planning with those other three forms of, of delivery. You can kind of look at the diagram here, and, and this does not include the virtual aspect, but really those three strands there, the traditional daily instruction, the modified on-campus, and the remote learning. And then our ability, if you see to the far right of that diagram, we would have to change on a moment's notice. It could be in an afternoon that we would have a concern of something happened at maybe a specific school that we'd need to, to change and close for a short period of time to clean. Or it could be across the entire district if it was something that happened within our city to impact things in a negative way. So we're trying to plan that all out so that we know exactly what we'll do in any one of those given situations as best we possibly can. The next part of that, the costs, that is to be determined. We're working on that. Todd has a spreadsheet that we will all go through and, and work to put those costs into so we can make sure it's something that we can manage within our district budget-wise and still is cost-effective to make the implemented changes we need to for the safety of our students. Committee participation, that's going to expand as we go throughout the summer. There's going to be more and more individuals that are brought in to plan on that, especially that curricular aspect and the virtual learning aspect. The summary of this is really just that the Sioux Falls School District is planning. We have planned for a multitude of things throughout the summer. We'll continue to plan for the fall. It's something that we meet on as a large group every week, and the individual smaller pillars are, are meeting every week and multiple times in between those dates as we begin to plan this out for the fall of 2021. So the recommendation is to acknowledge the board update on the district Return to Learning, our R2L, that planning process for the 2021 summer programs and the school year based on the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. I'd stand by for any questions.
First, thank you to everyone at IAPC and throughout the district who has helped come, start developing this plan. I thank Dr. Maher and you, and I also thank Dr. Maher for lending you to the State DOE to be working on the state back-to-school plan with the Department of Education. Appreciate your expertise.
We've had numerous emails from other individuals around the state asking for our plan after many of those reports, so it's been nice.
Part of our duty as the largest district in the state to help other districts who don't have the resources we do to help with their planning, so thank you. I guess a couple of questions, especially if we go to like the modified on-campus, and I know we don't have the plan developed yet. Is there a way we can work with the city as well as, I know our Kids' Inc. program, I just, I, I feel like logistically a nightmare for our staff, for families. I just, I feel like logistically a nightmare for our staff, for families with daycare. You know, we use the school as daycare, but now they're only there Monday, Tuesday, and I'm a teacher, and how will we work through those issues?
A lot of very good questions, that, because it does come in quite often with individuals if they're going to be off. It was easier this past spring because most of the city was individuals off and the daycare was provided. And so we're trying to work through to address some of those things. It is difficult because if something happens in our city that causes us to close schools, a lot of daycares may close at the same time. And so we're trying to work through that to look at family units of how we can make sure that they're in the same cycle together. Part of the discussion on that is, and that's what we're going to send out the survey to our parents to ask, is if we had gone through a spell of time where we had to close schools for two, three weeks, would you be more in favor of bringing back the whole group or cautionary process of bringing back a fourth of the students at a time if we kept that in the family process? I would imagine many would have said, absolutely, take my kid for at least a day a week and get them back into the school setting, or two days a week. Whatever you can do is great, but it does create a childcare issue for our staff as well. And we're fully aware of. We did provide some of those services for the health facilities. And we're trying to have some of those conversations of what we would do in that same circumstance for our own staff too.
And maybe possible with the new superintendent, we could ask for another update in July for the public, as well as maybe with Tavik, if we know more what money we're getting from the governor and feds to help with the COVID-related expenses. If we could have that included in that, I think it'd be helpful for the public. And will this be on our district website anywhere?
We can absolutely put the, you know, the illustrations on there and the support groups or the pillars on there so they know that planning process. The details of that, we're still working through because the guiding team has not vetted those yet to be able to put those out there.
Awesome. Is there a date, like, where families could start reaching out to their building administrators to kind of, with questions? I know it's too early now.
Currently, our goal is to have most of this in place by the end of June as far as the plan. But then there's a lot of training and details that have to go into place after that with the curriculum, the virtual, the modified, you know, what those packets, or not packets, but what those blocks of learning would be. And so many of those details would still need to be worked out in through July, but the framework we're hoping to have by that time. And obviously have the blessing of Dr. Maher and then Dr. Stavam coming in on that that she as well would be in favor of those.
I think the question I get asked the most often is, when will we know? And I know you don't have a crystal ball, so I don't expect you to give me a date. But I think my assumption, hopefully is correct, is that if our community continues in the path it has been for the last several weeks, which, you know, still has some peaks, but for the most part has kind of died down, I would assume that we would plan on returning to a traditional schedule with, like you mentioned, environmental changes and things like that. So unless there's some other spike or some other kind of crisis, assume that traditional is the goal to get back to based on current standards. Is that correct?
That is absolutely our goal, and you can see that through the summer plan as it builds up through the summer. So our goal is to be back into the traditional setting, but understanding that we're going to have to take care of some individuals that may not be able to return in that setting. So we're planning for both those, but the goal would be up until the day before to have that as traditional and we see what happens in our community.
Thank you.
Both staff and students protecting the vulnerable.
I'd just like to thank you too and the whole team that's been working on this. I think it was maybe the end of April, beginning of May, I sent Dr. Maher an email, and I just said, tell me you're planning for August. And I think his words were, I'm not sure if that makes you feel better, but, you know, he laid out some things. I'm like, no. I just know that you're having the conversations and your teams are having the conversations. So it put me at ease as a school board member, as a parent, knowing that we were in fact working on a plan. And this just illustrates all the work that you guys have done and just really appreciate it all, and thank you.
I move to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second to acknowledge the update on the Return to Learning Plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries. I would just like to remind the public that Monday, June 22nd, will be the final vote on boundaries. Public input will be allowed at that meeting as well. You also may still use Let's Talk or email or call any of the board members. So thank you. Any other news? Oh, we have one more. I'm sorry, my election.
One small thing.
Skip right by that. Sorry. Canvas the election results.
Thank you. As everybody knows, our combined city-school election was scheduled for April 14th, but with the coronavirus pandemic, all elections, spring elections were canceled and moved to June. And then we decided, we in the city decided to combine with the primary. So that was held on June 2nd. And because the optical scanning equipment purchased by the city and county reads the ballots and tallies votes by computer, there is no need for a reading of the unofficial totals by polling place. So I would ask that you make the following motion. Acknowledge the canvass of the results of the school board race of the Sioux Falls School District Annual Election held on June 2nd, 2020, for one three-year term for Office of Member of the School Board with the results as follows. Cynthia Mickelson, 14,818 votes. Sarah Stocky, 6,420. The total number of votes cast was 21,238.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And I have a certificate of election to present.
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Glad to be here. Thank you very much for that, and I also want to thank again the public for being here and being engaged in this process. We really do appreciate it, even if we don't agree. We appreciate your being involved in this. And I cannot thank enough the district for all of their help with this process. This has been for 19 months, I think we counted last, that all of this information being gathered and so forth. So it helped us run this process as smoothly as we could and answered a lot of our questions. So thank you very much for all your assistance. I commend you for all the efforts, and I'm sure you'll be really glad you won't be getting 10 million emails from me hopefully in the next week. So any other comments for the good of the...
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you.